Yeah, you'll have to turn off the TV.
Zoom is broadcasting live. We're live on Comcast. We're live on our website. Standby for Facebook.
You, you're gonna have to turn it off. For the sound.
Sorry for the delay, we're waiting on Facebook.
Jeff, I see that it's.
Okay, good. Then that does off our channels.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the May 12, 2020 City Council Committee meeting. It's gonna be done electronically. We say the governor release executive order number 16, and then they need to maintain, need to limit the community spread of COVID-19. The May 12, 2020, the Council Committee meeting will be held by electronic means. This meeting will be livestreamed to protect the public's health, safety, and welfare for the council and the citizens. The addresses will be shown on the screen if you'd like to join. In motion?
Calling the meeting, daughter.
Do we do a motion to approve?
Been doing motion to approve.
Did you make the motion, vice mayor?
Well, that's what we've been doing, I mean, I.
Jimmy over to make some motion to approve.
Second.
Oh, you got a motion by Mr. Overton and second by Johnny Alexander. Connie, you'll have to roll call vote on it.
Alrighty. Vice Mayor Camp. Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Fan.
Yeah.
Sorry, I didn't hear you.
Yes.
Mr. Fennell.
Yes.
Mr. Hayes.
Yes.
Ms. Love.
Yes.
And Mr. Overton.
Yes.
Seven to one, I mean, seven to zero.
Thank you, Ms. Catherine, now you need to do the roll call for the meeting.
Alrighty. Vice Mayor Camp.
Present.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Fan.
Here.
Mr. Fennell.
Yes.
Mr. Hayes.
Present.
Ms. Love.
Here.
Mr. Overton.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. We have before us now the approval of minutes for the April 28, 2020 Council Committee Electronic Meeting.
Most approved with Jimmy Overton.
Second by Councilman Fennell.
Have we had a motion, seconds, or any additions or changes or corrections?
I've got one teeny weeny little error that's on page four, towards the bottom, under number four, it says, mayor said the money, well, the money needs a space in between the two words.
It does, I see it.
Thank you.
Connie, you'll have to make a roll call for, except these minutes with changes.
Vice Mayor Camp.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Fan.
Yes.
Mr. Fennell.
Yes.
Mr. Hayes.
Yes.
Ms. Love.
Yes.
Mr. Overton.
Yes.
They're approved.
Thank you, we'll move on now to public recognition. Anyone with the public wish to speak. If you raise your hand, contact Jeff.
Alright. Let's start with Jeanne Gregory. Your mic is open? Let's try that again. You may have to unmute your own mic, I'm trying to, there you go.
How's that?
Go ahead. Yes, ma'am.
Awesome, thank you, good evening, everyone.
How are you doing?
Hey, I'm Jeanne Gregory. And I'm the chairman for the Economic and Community Development Board for the City of Gallatin. And I'd like to make a few comments about something you're going to be addressing this evening. You'll give me just a moment to pull my comments up.
Lucky you.
Right, I know.
Do we need to come back to you, Ms. Gregory?
Is there someone else?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, thank you.
Let's go to Mr. Jevance, go ahead.
Hi, it's actually Michelle.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor and Council.
I can't hear.
I can't hear any of it.
You can't hear me at all?
Yeah, barely, sound like you whispering.
Can you hear me now?
No, not even better.
No, okay.
Talk into the mic or something.
Where's the mic?
It's towards the, it's at the bottom of your phone. If you're on the phone.
Oh, no, I'm on a computer, okay, wait, is, okay, now can you hear me?
Yeah, that's a little better.
Better.
Okay, okay, good. Um, so I just had a couple of questions on the budget, actually. Paige, I watched your talk show last week, and you mentioned that because we have had to cut our budget so significantly that we are going to be cutting our charitable contributions. And I was wondering if you could tell us specifically what we are cutting in regards to our charitable contributions? And also, I noticed that, I think it was $28,000 was added to the budget for the Fourth of July, and I'm not clear on what that's for, I was wondering if you could tell us what that was, or if it was for parade, or fireworks, or what that was? And I was thinking that it would be a good idea and appropriate to use that money instead for our charitable contributions, and maybe also take the $50,000 from the Fire and Water Festival, and reallocate that as well for our nonprofits. We're going to be seeing our nonprofits probably struggle a lot this year, and I don't think that we should cut that part of the budget. And then the other thing I was wondering on the budget was, I think it was, just going by memory, but I think it was $3.4 million that was cut from the road budget, and I was wondering if you could specify on that, if that was maintenance and repair, and what that was exactly that was being cut? And in my opinion, I believe that road maintenance is one of the most important services that a city should provide, and I do not agree with cutting that so deeply. I'd like to hear the council weigh in on some ideas about these items, and have them maybe bring forth some ideas of how to work on the budget more, to improve on the good work that you did on it, Paige, and I just would like to maybe figure out a way to not cut the road budget so significantly, and come up with some other ideas. And that was all my comments for right now, thank you.
Very good. Is Pascal going to make a comment as well?
I don't know.
Jeff, are you able to share the picture I sent you today?
No, as I instructed, it was to be emailed to the councilman?
Yeah, I could not do that, unfortunately, so if you can share them, I'll come back next week, that's not a big deal.
Okay. Okay, moving on, Jeanne Gregory, are you ready?
Yes, thank you, I appreciate it, Jeff. Hi, Mayor Brown and council members, thank you for taking up this project and for your continued support. I want to express to the council, to the full support of the Gallatin Economic Development Agency Board of Directors for this project. Project Woolhawk will add to our tax base, build our community's brand, and provide high-quality jobs, as well as long-term opportunities for electricians, tradesmen, and local construction firms. Furthermore, should Gallatin win this project, it will be a terrific validation of our strategic goal to target tech sector jobs for our growing community. Our board, as you know, is made up of private sector business people that the city has charged with the oversight of our economic development program. We find the agreement our staff has negotiated over two years with Project Woolhawk to be equitable and fair to all parties. It's well within industry standards, and it will be a net positive for Gallatin in terms of revenue and employment. It's gratifying and exciting to see our community competing globally for jobs and investment, particularly during such a difficult economic period. It speaks to the quality of our community, the strength of your leadership, and the terrific partnership we have when we bring these things to the table. I urge you to move Project Woolhawk forward with your actions today, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you. The phone number ending in 283, your mic is open? Okay, Bo's iPad. Your mic is open, do you wish to speak? Okay. CB?
Jeff, his shoulder's still muted.
Well, I'm able, when I hit the unmute, they have to unmute on their end as well. So I'm allowing them to unmute their mic. Okay, the next one is COG. Is something you'd like to say?
The City of Gallatin.
Ah, okay. How about EK Stevens? Reminder, I can only hit unmute, you have to unmute your own mic to take the rest of the way. Okay, moving on to No Thanks. Do you wish to say anything, No Thanks? Alright, next is Rock the Street, Wall Street? There's something you'd like to say? Okay, that's everyone.
Jeff, we'll declare public recognition closed, we'll move on to mayor's comments.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Camp, the only thing I think that I, well, I guess I'll say that we continue to navigate this path, and I think we're doing it well, and I think we're getting closer to the other side. I still just have such high regard and appreciation, respect for our Gallatin City employees, they have continued to come to work, do their jobs with great attitudes, and really work hard to serve the public, and we have interrupted no services to our citizens throughout this entire situation, I'm very, very proud of our employees because of that. On a positive note, I hope you notice that the flower baskets are going up around the city this week, I know that people love those each year, and I hope that they're going to brighten some spirits this week. I will say, unfortunately, one batch of them got hit with too much heat last weekend because they were trying to keep them warm, and the other batch got too cold last weekend because the heat didn't kick on, but they will recover and they will be beautiful, they were absolutely gorgeous last week, so we were sad to see them take a hit over the weekend. We all need to extend our appreciation to Gallatin High School and Station Camp High School, because those schools closed quite some time ago, and those teachers in charge of those programs took it upon themselves to keep those flower baskets going, so if you see Rebecca, Rebecca Morgan, or Allison Choate out, be sure and tell them a big thank you, because those ladies single-handedly took care of these baskets, because their students weren't there to help anymore, and it was supposed to be a learning experience for them, so we're certainly appreciative of them, of those schools, and those students who helped get these baskets started, and we certainly hope the community enjoys them all. I will have some other business at the end of the meeting, but that would conclude my comments at this time.
Thank you, Mayor, we'll declare mayor's comments closed, we'll move on to agenda. First item on the agenda is artist number 02005-22, rezoning 467 acres from R40 residential district to the MRO multiple residential district with preliminary master plan, plant plan for Montgomery office, Mr. Record.
Okay, I'm going to be sharing my screen here on this item, so please, if you can, or somebody confirm that you can see what I'm sharing on the screen. Okay, is that pop up?
Yes, it did, Bill.
Okay, great, good, okay, we're on the right track then. Okay, this is a request to rezone a .67 acre lot on the south side of Nashville Pike, just east of Lake Shore Drive, and then Leland Heights subdivision. The property now is zoned R40, which is residential, generally, single-family residential zoning, and the applicants want to rezone it to MRO, multiple-family residential and office district with the preliminary master development plan, or professional, intend to keep the house on the property. Right now, where my cursor is located is the parcel that would be changed from, so what you have on either side is, it's shown in red, is MRO zoning, this property is zoned R40, so it's shown in yellow, so similarly, they would rezone their property, like many other property owners along that corridor have done. Currently, there's a house on the lot with a driveway out to Nashville Pike, and I have a picture of that, I'll show you in just a second. What the applicant intends to do is convert the house into a professional office, engineering office, and add parking in the front yard, moving around the existing trees and much of the landscape, so that would be preserved. They also provide a joint driveway with the adjacent property owners next door, and closing their existing driveway, so it'll be similar to many of the other developments, which will have a service lane and joint access easement. There'll be a sidewalk extended along the front and connect to the building, and they'll have some substantial buffers around the rear side and the side yards, with the exception of the west side yard where there's access for the existing driveway to the back of the house. The Carmen Real Estate Office is on the west side of the property right now. This is photographs, two photographs of what the house looks like now, and generally, we kept in its same condition, although it will be converted to a commercial business. The planning commission reviewed this request and recommended, unanimously recommended approval of the rezoning request. Be glad to answer any questions.
Bill, I've got one question. Is there enough parking at this place the way it is right now?
Not right now, they will be adding parking here in the front for customers, and it's a professional office, engineering office, and they'll have several parking spaces behind the building, which will be staff members.
So I read that they needed about nine, so that's, so they'll have enough, right?
Yeah, the planning commission approved the parking plan as well.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Councilman Fan, and a second by Councilman Love, is there any further discussion?
Yeah, hey, Bill. Where is that in location to my office?
Wall Street.
This is the property right here where my cursor is, can everybody see that? Your office is right, it just.
There, okay, got you, okay.
So, just down.
I got you, okay, thank you.
Hey, Bill, I got one question to ask.
Okay.
The lady that was at the planning commission meeting that's got the fence, putting a fence up behind her house, does this affect her property in any at all, where she put a fence that she didn't have a permit for?
Well, that was the MBZA meeting, Board of Zoning Appeals, that case is on this property right here that I'm showing, that's on Blackshear, it's actually a corner lot there, and a fence was erected along the backside of this lot, so currently, that fence is still up before the BZA for consideration, and this lot backs up to that lot, so.
Right.
It's the common lot line right here.
So that's why I'm asking that question, is that going to affect this at all?
No, sir, it will not.
Okay.
Any other questions? I'm gonna take a vote to move it on to council then. Connie, you want to do a roll call?
Vice Mayor Camp.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Fan.
Yes.
Mr. Fennell.
Yes.
Mr. Hayes.
Yes.
Ms. Love.
Yes.
Mr. Overton.
Yes.
It's an unanimous vote.
Thank you, Connie. Okay, we'll move on to item number two, this review of the development agreement for Project Woolhawk, and ADA director.
Thank you, appreciate it, I'd like to just make a few comments about both proposals that are in front of you here tonight. Three years ago, the city adopted a strategic plan specifically directing this office to pursue technology-based companies as a way of diversifying the employment opportunities in Gallatin. And subsequently, the board of the directors for the Gallatin Economic Development Agency, along with Industrial Development Board endorsed that plan and adopted a similar approach. In January of this year, we broke ground on Archer Data Center, it's a co-location facility that will attract an incredible variety of tech-based companies needing cloud space. After Archer Data Center is located here, you know, we knew that this strategic plan was working, would be a success, but we also knew that in order to continue attracting investment and jobs from the tech sector, we would need to build a workforce, and we did a tremendous job, worked with Val State, and putting together some programs there. Tonight, this body has the opportunity to keep the city on the track spelled out in that strategic plan by moving the delegation of authority for Project Woolhawk pilot and the development agreement onto council production. And first, let me say, this has been and remains an extremely competitive process, and it can be hard find, hard pressed, though, to find a city that wouldn't welcome the opportunity to have a project of this magnitude. That being said, the pilot under consideration tonight is consistent with what other communities have offered. I can point to a much larger market that is receiving less than half of what we will be receiving under this agreement, and I'm sure there are communities out there that are receiving more. What we need to keep in mind is that this agreement is fair, and it keeps the city whole. There's an escalation clause included in it, where the payments will increase 5% every five years, there are also terms in the agreement that encourage the company to develop the site as quickly as possible. The figures in the pilot came about after extensive research, many conversations with the economic development team at TVA and the state of Tennessee. The company is committing to two buildings, which will make them the largest revenue source in the county. They are, however, ensuring at their own expense that there'll be infrastructure in place for additional buildings. And if they're to build out full, they would be paying at a minimum $4.25 million annually. Out of that, the county will be receiving just over $2.9 million, the city will be receiving $1.25 million. And over the length of the agreement, without taking into account the escalation clauses, that has the potential of being $85 million of revenue for our community. And as is required by law, we've had an economic impact analysis run by Younger Associates. Younger Associates is the company that did the impact study for locating the Toyota facility here in the southeast, it did the impact study for the new Caterpillar plant relocating to the United States from Japan, the economic impact expansion of FedEx Ground Services, Goodyear Tire plant, St. Jude's $2 billion expenses, expansion, literally hundreds of studies, and that study they did for us shows a 3.22 to 1 return, meaning for that every dollar we abate, the city will see $3.22 in return. I'd also like to address the development agreement, this before you, as you recall, the utility agreement you recently approved has the company paying $8.4 million for upgrades to our water and sewer facilities. Included in tonight's agreement is a commitment by the company to pay more than $5 million for a road extension, which they will then dedicate to the city. In addition, they'll be paying the city $2.4 million over the next six years to cover plan reviews, permitting, inspections, permits, all those fees. And in contrast, I can point you to another community that in fact invested $6.6 million of their own funds to upgrade their water and sewer facilities for a similar data center project, and they waived over $2 million in permit fees. The proposed agreement in front of you is very equitable for both parties, and it gives the city a guaranteed $400,000 income over the next six years. I should mention that there are no exhibits on that agreement, those are still being finalized, the road design and all that kind of stuff, just know that the agreement will not change, and I will have those exhibits to you well in advance of next week's council meeting. With that, are there any questions?
I got one, James.
Yes.
The property tax has been, that we've been receiving as far as accounting the city goes on this particular piece of property, can you give us an idea of what it is bringing now in the green belt, and what we look, we're to bring in once it's done?
I meant to mention that, so thank you for asking that. Currently, the city is receiving $811 a year off of that, and the county's getting $8,163, which comes to like $8,974, and just to compare what we'd be receiving off of their first two buildings, it would take 195 years of that income to realize what we'll be getting annually off their first two buildings.
I've just got one more, then I'll turn it over to.
I've got one, too.
May I please interrupt you all, I'm sorry to do this, but Jeff Hinchell, I've been trying to text you, but we are not on Facebook Live, I wanted to let you know that, see if you can get back. And then I also wanted to ask that James specifically talk about the development agreement, because that's actually item two, and I know that there's specifics about that, and I'm so sorry to interrupt, I'll shut up now.
Sorry. Mr. Penn, I know I've talked to you a couple of times, my thing about this was making sure that it seems like we got a good deal as far as comparing it to other cities, say Huntsville, as far as comparing the two deals, and I know that our city is much different than Huntsville, but I just want to make sure that we're getting a good deal out of this, like the other cities are actually doing that are being built.
Yes, I can actually address Huntsville directly, I can send you a link to a newspaper article, that's the community that actually invested $6.6 million of their own money and waived $2 million with the permit fees.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question also.
Yes, Mr. Penn.
How many jobs do you think is going to create, and approximately how many subcontractors will be created over this?
Okay, they'll be, they're committing to what, 40 badged employees, meaning 40 employees that would work for that company, and they will earn an average of $80,000 a year, plus about a 30% benefit package. The subcontractors, there should be close to 100 of those, and they're going to have a $50,000 a year average salary for those. Let me also, and thank you for bringing this up, our, when we started that, and I mentioned it briefly, we knew that we needed to have a workforce pipeline, so we started working very carefully and closely with Val State, and they have a tremendous number of classes there already, they have degrees in cyber defense, networking, programming, systems analyst, systems administration, so we already have in place educational opportunities for our community here, and we facilitated this last year, a partnership between the Nashville Technology Council and Val State to bring the Apprentice TM program to Gallatin, they're about halfway through their first cohort, and that was a program that's developed by Microsoft and Amazon in Seattle to ramp up their workforce quickly. So we put in place the workforce, and they will be advertising these jobs, anyone in our community that has the skill set will be able to apply for those jobs, and like I said, we've already put the pipeline together to help our. And like I said, we've already put the pipeline together to help our community grow skills.
Will these subcontractors be on site or will they be off campus?
Uh, probably a little bit of both.
Thank you.
An opportunity probably for some extra real estate to be taken up in the, in the city, but, um, most of them will be in and out of the building. They might establish, uh, some kind of a location close to.
Mr. Fenton, will these be, what percentage would be local contracted, uh, opposed to out-of-town contractors?
Uh, they are planning on a construction workforce of, in a, in, in excess of 1,200. Uh, Councilman Alexander, and therefore, um, anyone here in the community that wants to have a job will, well, there'll be a spot.
Great.
We'll have folks come in, of course, but they aren't going to be able to bring 1,200 people. They're going to hire as many people, they'll probably have to reach out 100 miles in, in, you know, circumference to try to find, radius to try to find all these workers.
Yeah, I, I think what they said in our last conversation was that they would probably have, um, jobs available for everybody within 200 miles that was able to, you know, I think they specified electrical contractors on that question, but they said they're going to have a lot of jobs for a lot of local people.
I have a comment, which is as a former Gallatin High School teacher, I am thrilled to have more job opportunities for these students that are going to be looking for jobs in this area so that they don't feel like they have to go leave Gallatin and go to another bigger city. And a lot of these jobs are, uh, exactly what our kids are looking for. So we want to have them have as many opportunities as possible right here in Gallatin. So that just makes me very happy that we're able to do that. And, um, thank you, Mr. Fenton, very much for all the work that you and your committee did to get this.
Thank you.
Um, Mr. Fenton, I just received a text that I read and I thought it was pretty interesting. Uh, it says having any data center located in your city is a huge deal and brings a lot of other collateral businesses to support it. No emissions, I pay intact jobs, clean industrial park, what more could we want? Maybe a financially strong company like Warhawk, $138 billion company, that's about twice the size of ACA or slightly more than IBM. And, uh, I, I've got four or five text messages that are pretty much similar and such. I think y'all have done a good job. I think the mayor, everybody's been involved in this, done a wonderful job, and I hope it lands.
James, I know how hard y'all have worked on this project, and I just want to say thanks. This is going to be a win-win for the city of Gallatin. Uh, as you know, we see a lot of negative on social media things, but, but we all know what this is going to mean in 20 years from now for our city. Uh, it'll put our city on another map. It really will, and I just appreciate all your hard work on it. And, uh, we'll do everything we can to try to make you successful, and I appreciate your hard work.
Thank you, uh, Councilman Overton. I, I do need to make it crystal clear that it wasn't just my office. If, if David Gregory hadn't done his part, if, if engineering hadn't done his part, code everything, this has been everyone in the city that's been involved in this for almost three years now. So it's, uh, it's the crew that you guys have put together and the leadership you've put in place, and so we appreciate you.
And that's what makes Gallatin stand out, the teamwork that our department head do. And I just pray and hope that they continue to work that way, and we shall continue to grow. Thank you again, Mr. Fenton.
I think it's time we moved it on. I make a motion, we approve.
I'll say that.
Okay.
We're not at it before we can have a motion right now. This was just a review.
If I could interject, um, number two, the development agreement, when it got put on the agenda last week, there was not a resolution because the development agreement was still in process. Since that time, uh, EDA has sent over a proposed resolution that will be before you next week, just authorizing the mayor to sign the development agreement that is attached in this. So you may go ahead and move it forward to council.
I, I got some comments first. I was reading those emails that you sent out today. $400,000 they're going to give us each year, but we're going to waive every fee. We're going to do everything for them. We're going to hire one inspector, take care of just nothing, but then that's $100,000 basically, the $400,000 is gone right then. What, what is, you, you give that, the average salary is $80,000 a year. What's the bottom people in this plant going to be making? I mean, are they, is it going to be $35,000 a year jobs, $30,000 a year jobs? And what's, what's the, the big part, the lower part of their people, or they're going to be back in an hour? You're muted, James.
Um, I mean, it's a secure facility, so they will have security guards there. They'll, I mean, they'll have those kind of jobs that are available, uh, but a vast majority of them, Vice Mayor, are, um, are, you know, those technology jobs. There aren't a lot of, 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 of other jobs besides, you know, what we're looking at. I'm not sure what you're asking there, sir.
Well, we giving up, we're giving up a lot for $400,000 a year.
That is only the permitting fees, just to get us to, that's $2.4 million in permit fees and inspection fees, sir. Yes. Yeah, and at that point in time, they go back to paying their regular fees. That is more than is necessary to hire, uh, staff to cover, um, the needs of this construction.
It's one of those things, I guess you've got to look at it long-term. That's what you've got to look at it.
This is the kind of deals that got Nashville and the problem they're in right now. And this is, this is the fourth one, I guess, we've done since I've been on the council, and they haven't gotten well. I'm not, I'm not against this project coming whatsoever, but we're sure giving up a ton of a bunch of stuff because we think it sounds good, and I don't see where we're getting a whole lot of what we're getting.
Is, is that not, that $400,000 is just for, uh, our fees, fee money though, but there's more money that we're getting.
Uh, so in permit fees, it's basically $2.4 million in permit fees over six years. And then the taxes that we'll be realizing, James, would you please remind me what that total number is, both for the city and for the county, say over that equivalent period?
So they're expecting, uh, this first building to come on. First off, they'll be paying regular property taxes on the property until these buildings are completed. And at that point in time, they'll have buildings one and two completed, which will, uh, well, they'll have building one completed, which is a million dollars a year, and then they'll start immediately on building two. So before the end of the six-year period, we will already have, uh, you know, more than a half a million dollars of property taxes coming into the city by itself and, uh, close to a million to the county. And that's, that's just for those first two buildings. And so, uh, again, by year six, we'll be, you know, there'll be millions of dollars coming into the community.
Plus the investment, they're making infrastructure, which I think is $6.8 million. Is that correct, David? Is that the right number, or James, don't you hear?
6.4 for the water and sewer and five plus million for the road, yes.
And for the, and they're building their own road. I mean, I really think, and I don't have a lot to compare it to because I haven't been involved in a lot of these type projects, but in this case, the city is not giving away land. We're not building roads. We're not contributing to their infrastructure. I feel like this company is actually stepping in here with some pretty generous offerings and could have made a lot of demands. Um.
Hey, Mary. This, this David Gregory.
Yes.
The water and sewer is 8.4 million donation to us, not 6. something.
Thank you. See, it's even better. It's 8.4. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, David.
So I mean, I, I, I feel like we're actually in a really good place because there's no way is the city out anything. There's no risk for the city. This is revenue that we're going to realize that we would not have realized without this project because realize a lot of this property also is tied up, is tied up in a trust, which is part of what took so long to kind of navigate this whole process to be able to accommodate it. So I really kind of think it's a, it's an excellent.
And, and if I might, Mayor, I'm going to share my screen for just a moment and, and show, uh, the Vice Mayor, uh, an article. So, actually, hang on. So this down here, if you see, they did not ask for a lot of incentives, hey, we want to buy our land, make sure we're a good neighbor. The city of Huntsville kicked in $6.6 million in indirect incentives, some of which will benefit the entire industrial park. And Facebook benefit is the waiving of permit fees of a $2 million value. So, um, while we, um, uh, maybe, you know, have, have created a, a different revenue stream for the city, we, we, like I said, we certainly aren't, uh, in a, in a bad position. I think, uh, I think it's a really fair, equitable, uh, position, Vice Mayor, where we will be covering all of our costs and, and with excess. So I think we're in a good spot there.
Um, anecdotally, another thing that was shared with me just in a conversation last week is that this company told me that they are very, very good corporate citizens and that they support, um, particularly education and STEM education, and then other nonprofits, that they're very generous partners. We don't know what that looks like, but typically when someone says that on the front end, I haven't seen anybody that hasn't measured up to that.
You want to say something, Jimmy?
No, I'm ready to move it on.
Ready to hear your red, yellow box come on. I just wonder if there's one to speak. All right, we've got a motion and a second, I guess, moving on, don't we? All favor, move it on. Connie, you about to do a roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Camp.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Phan.
Yes.
Mr. Fennell.
Yes.
Mr. Hayes.
Yes.
Ms. Love.
Yes.
And Mr. Overton.
Yes.
We have a unanimous vote.
Thank you, Connie. We'll move on to item number three now. This is a resolution, R2005-24, approving payment in lieu of tax bailout program or economic development increase for Project Warhawk. Mr. Fenton.
Uh, yes, we, we went, uh, kind of talked through this earlier. Again, this is where it's, it's spelled out, uh, the annual payments or the agreement. Million dollars for the first building, $750,000 for the second building. It drops down $50,000 apiece as it, as it reduces, again, at full buildout, $4.5 million a year. The city will be receiving about 1.25 million of that.
Motion to send it on with Jimmy Overton.
Second.
Jimmy, I need to show a little respect. We have a motion. Seconds are in discussion. Say none. Connie, do a roll call.
Vice Mayor Camp.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Phan.
Yes.
Mr. Fennell.
Yes.
Mr. Hayes.
Yes.
Ms. Love.
Yes.
And Mr. Overton.
Yes.
We have a unanimous vote.
Thank you, Mayor. We're moving on to council. Move on to, item number four is a resolution, R2005-26, authorize a car service agreement with a global payment direct incorporated for municipal fork software credit card payment system. Miss Kitchell.
Vice Mayor Camp, I'd like to ask this item be deferred. I think I have another, um, software company that I may go with, so right now I'm going to defer as per defer.
Without objection, we'll defer it then.
Thank you.
All right. We move on to item number five, purge of bad debts for fiscal year 2020 fiscal year from the U.S. Intelligence Department.
Yeah, this is just, uh, purging bad debts, uh, the three-year old that hasn't been collected. It's all been sent to the collection agency, but we didn't, uh, collect that. We have to write them off every year. And, uh, this is the, what we're presenting to write off. I want to make some, I want to give you some numbers here, uh, on your final sheet. You've got there, you've got gas, water, sewer, garbage, all of that. We've got to change some figures on the gas, the water and the sewer. So if you would, write down under gas, $13,902.39. Water, $26,622.93. And sewer, $23,111.98. The rest of them are the same, except for the total, and it's $75,471.35. This is the least amount that we've had in the last 10 years.
Good job, David.
Thank you.
But that indicates that our economy has been better in the last few months.
Uh, yes, it does.
Good.
I need a motion in a second to send it on to council.
Motion to approve.
This, this doesn't have to go to council. It, I just have to present it to the council.
Okay, so it's, uh.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'll read the next one down below it. Okay, this is, moving on to item number six is orders number 02005-21, waving taffies for beha- behalf, behalf of taffy management, Summer County. Mr. Gregory.
Yeah, that's something that we do for, uh, have to, of Summer County. This is just for, uh, one at, uh, 51 Pemberton Street.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
A motion for Councilman Hayes, a second for Councilman Love. Any discussion?
I got a question.
I got a question, Mr. Phan.
In the past, have you kept a record by any chance of your delinquent payments? How it's, how it's, uh, connected to the, um, economy?
You talked about in the last couple of months.
Well, last year. I just wondered if it'd be a good indication for the city to look at.
Did, did you get the, uh, printout that I gave you? There was a printout that was sent out with a packet.
It's got a history on it?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's on there.
If you look at, it says utility account, written off as bad debts, and it's a chart.
Okay.
You can see it, the, uh, table chart there. You see it, starting with the year 2011.
What page is that on?
Well, I only had three sheets.
Seven, eight, uh, seven.
Yeah, it's on there. It's there.
It's there. And it shows you the amount and how many, uh, the top numbers on there shows you how many customers.
It's the last page in the book.
And then it shows the amount for that year.
This is interesting.
We're on item five or six.
I think talking about number five.
Six. We're on item number six.
Yeah, we're on item number six.
We, we didn't go back to five. We were, we're on six right now.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, we're on item. He want to know about bad debts, right?
I just, I'm trying to link it to the economy. If it would be a good thing to watch in the future, to maybe watch expenses, if you've seen.
You got to see like this.
Yeah.
But we're on item number six now, I think.
The information, you've got the information there. Okay.
Are we having a motion in a second? Is there any other discussion? Miss Kitchell, do a roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Camp.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Phan.
Yes.
Mr. Fennell.
Yes.
Mr. Hayes.
Yes.
Ms. Love.
Yes.
Mr. Overton.
Yes.
We have a unanimous vote.
Let's go on to council then. Item number seven, this is orders O2005-20, appropriating $129,600 received from the state of Tennessee for training supplements. Rachel Nichols.
This is a ordinance to appropriate funds for the annual training supplements that we receive from the state of Tennessee for the police and fire that complete, uh, their required training annually. Um, this year, the state raised the amount from $600 per person to $800 per person, so it's a little higher than it has been, but this is just to budget the money that we've already received.
Motion to approve with Jimmy Overton.
Second, Tom Fennell. We have a motion. Seconds are in discussion.
So that amount, that isn't already in the budget at all for training, or is that right? This is in addition to what's listed for training right now?
Yes, but it doesn't go into their training budget. It goes as a payment to each individual who completed their training last year. It doesn't go into the chief's budget to just be spent on training items. This is for payment for the courses that they completed last year, and it's paid each individual.
Okay, I see. Thank you, Rachel.
Are there any other questions? Say none. Miss Kitchell, do a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Camp. Vice Mayor Camp.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Phan.
Yes.
Mr. Fennell.
Yes.
Mr. Hayes.
Yes.
Ms. Love.
Yes.
Mr. Overton.
Yes.
We have a unanimous vote.
Thank you.
We'll move on to item number eight now. This is a resolution number R two zero zero five dash two five, to approve lease agreement and regulations from the city leaseer, Galton Chamber of Commerce Farmers Market. Mayor Brown.
That's pretty much what it is, just renewing our lease with the Chamber of Commerce on the Galton Farmers Market. Susan, they didn't indicate any terms that they wish changed, did they?
No. The only term that we, that we did add was just so it would be auto-renewing until either party decides it wants to terminate. Of course, the council could always take this back up at any time.
Motion to approve.
A motion, seconds are in discussion.
I must disclose that I, disclose that I am on the chamber board, but I'll be voting in favor of it. But I just disclose that I'm on the chamber board.
And I'd like to say the chamber does a wonderful job.
Ms. Kittrell, you'll do a vote, please.
Vice Mayor Camp.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Phan.
Yes.
Mr. Fennell.
He's muted.
You're muted, Sean.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Mr. Hayes.
Yes.
Ms. Love.
Yes.
Mr. Overton.
Yes.
We have a unanimous vote.
Uh, that includes our agenda. Is there any other business being brought before this body?
I have a couple of things, if you're ready for me.
Yeah, I guess you're the one who wants to talk.
Okay. I wanted to talk to the council about a few things, one of which is how we kind of proceed from here. Right now, my plan has been to open the buildings next Monday, which is May eighteenth. Unless there's objection by the council, I think we're, we being the department heads are pretty comfortable and prepared for that. We do have masks, we do have thermometers. We plan on putting signage on the buildings. And David Brown is prepared to open the civic center if we open buildings next Monday. But what I wanted to hear from you all, if you have any concerns with that or if you think we should not be doing that. We're still going to encourage people to conduct business online via telephone, via email as much as absolutely possible. But we are going to have the buildings open for anyone that may come in person. You may not know this, and I'll add this as well, but even Judge Kittrell is continuing to find ways to hold court. She's actually doing court through the drive-through window every single morning so that she can kind of catch up with her docket. And there are plans to resume in-person court in June, but it's gonna look quite a bit different. And so we'll have to work to accommodate that because the, I guess it's the Supreme Court of Tennessee, is that right? That kind of makes the determination. It's some pretty stringent requirements around that. But I think that we as a city can open safely and, and, you know, don't think that, you know, people are gonna not handle it well. And I think that we're gonna be able to handle it well. So any thoughts from any of you all or any objection to that?
Mayor, when we open a building, will we be passing out masks? Are we requiring people to come in still with masks?
Now, we will have masks available, but we are not requiring employees to wear masks or will we require the public to wear masks? We are going to require them social distance.
What are we gonna do about meetings? Are we gonna continue this through, all the way through June?
That's gonna be my next question after we talk about the buildings.
I'm good with the opening of meetings, Paige. I think it's, you know, time to get on. I think the department heads are ready for it. I just want everybody to be careful, that's all.
Well, what about the electric department building and the public works building or utilities building? Are they gonna be open too?
Well, I think the electric department's decision would be made by their board. I think, you know, public utilities and public works would kind of be following the same guidelines as the rest of us, you know, trying to keep people.
Seconds, yes.
Yeah. Okay. Do we have somebody that's gonna be monitoring, like city, no?
We will have signage with all those good reminders that you see everywhere you go.
As long as all the department heads and feel caught, feel comfortable and confident, then I would be fine with that, too.
Said you had something else you wanted to discuss, Paige?
No, so everybody's good with that, I guess. Were there any department heads that wanted to chime in that? All right. So the next thing that I wanted to discuss was, well, I did mention that we do have masks. We actually got in quite a few masks. And both our Galton Department of Electricity and the Recorder's Office are handing masks out through our drive-through windows for people in the community that may wish to have masks. We will probably have more of our masks to distribute as well. Certainly, we'll have them available to city employees, to department heads, to council, and probably some to the public as well. And if you come in the building, certainly they'll be available. So we have those things available. And virtual meetings, per the governor, are now allowed through the thirtieth of June. And so that means that we can continue to meet virtually through that time. Um, I am in favor of that because I do not, I do not see a way that we can accommodate people or, you know, crowds of people. Well, first of all, we wouldn't be able to do the less than ten thing, right? Just us that have to be there. And so then if we had our large group, we're already kind of violating his orders to be in groups of less than ten. And then I don't see how we could even split up and accommodate the public that may wish to participate if we are in person and they have to participate virtually. So I think that in spite of the fact that we didn't get on Facebook Live tonight, I, I, I think that we're handling these virtual meetings fairly well. The thing that I would say is if there's something really controversial that comes up, that maybe we should defer that to a time or we could have in-person meetings in the future if we, if we bump into something like that. But I think right now, I mean, that's technically another, I guess, six weeks. So that, 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 that is what I think we should do. But I'm bringing it to the council because it's your decision.
I'm in favor of it.
I'm in favor.
Paige.
I've heard people that watches on Facebook who really prefer this in, in being able to make comments and online and to see everything that happens. And I don't see how we could possibly do it, just like you said, with following the recommendations for safety.
So shall we continue these through June thirtieth?
I think so. Proceed with caution.
I mean, if something were to happen and all the social distance orders were lifted and there were no more cases, I mean, we could potentially change that and say, hey, we can start meeting next week. But if they're not lifted, that would put us in place to do that through the thirtieth. Right now, tonight, we are gonna execute another emergency order that will take us the next Tuesday. Ms. Haumacalli and I, today, we're talking about whether we continue doing that. The two things that are provided under that that I think are important is one, well, we're gonna lift the part about the closure of buildings. But the other two things that are provided under that are the suspension of utility cutoffs and the suspension of issuance of permits for door-to-door solicitations. And so those are two things that are provided for under those emergency orders. And when we lift those emergency orders, those will be lifted as well. So right now, we're gonna do them for at least another week. Please offer feedback if you have a feeling on that.
Paige, can you tell me again what you're saying about door-to-door?
Uh, one of the emergence, one of the executive orders under the emergency order was suspending permits for door-to-door solicitation because there are still people that wanna go door-to-door and sell things. And we did not feel like that was consistent with proper social distancing and, you know, going up and touching somebody's personal space, trying to sell something in this time when we're supposed to be protecting ourselves, particularly our elderly, who are probably the most apt to answer the door and interact with state solicitors.
I'm with you. I'd hate to.
They still gotta have the permit to do that, though, Sean.
But we have, um, just, just for your information, we have had some reports, had one today and had one over the weekend, of people soliciting in neighborhoods. So anyone that's watching this, if you have someone soliciting, they do not have a permit. They are not allowed to be soliciting. You may call the police department, try and get their names, any information you might be able to get and any description of their vehicle if you happen to have a solicitor at your door.
So Paige, where do we stand with our business?
I'm sorry?
Where do we stand with our local business? Do they have the green light to open completely or partially open or?
Well, per the governor's multiple executive orders, I think most businesses are back open. The exceptions to that would probably be like theaters and concert venues and nightclubs and bars. There may be some other exception I'm not thinking of. But pretty much is everything else is allowed to be open at this time. There are guidelines, sports teams are another thing, they're not allowed to be functioning right now. But everything else is pretty much opening or open under different guidelines, different restrictions, different guidance, particularly having to do, I'd say, with capacity. Also encouraging face mask testing, of course, hygiene, sanitization of service, that sort.
What about our churches?
Well, churches, per the governor, are allowed to meet. They are asked to adhere to the social distancing guidelines that are put through by the CDC.
But some churches have, have not done so, like the Methodist churches in this area are, have not given.
They still limit them to fifty people, aren't they, Paige?
Um, I don't think that there is a limit, but they must social distance. And the guidance that I have, and multiple pastors have called me. And, and, you know, personally, I tell them that, you know, if you feel like you need to get people together, that's up to you, but I, I beg you to offer an alternative for the vulnerable population that does not need to be in a closed facility with people who could be carrying the virus and be, you know, transmitting it to others. And, and that's how I, I feel very strongly about that. But ultimately, it's up to, you know, each individual church what they wanna do. But I, I highly recommend offering alternative ways for vulnerable members of a congregation to be able to participate in worship with their church.
I know some churches have service in the parking lot, kind of like a, a drive-in thing where the patron stay in the car and the pastor maybe in the parking lot on the church step with a, you know, giving the message. That's one alternative I've seen churches do.
Yeah, people have been doing that. A lot of people have been doing it virtually. Some people have been doing those kind of drive-in type churches with service transmitted over the radio.
Still doing it, the phone system. And messages.
Okay. Finally, I mentioned that there are new executive orders today. And this is for your benefit and for the public's benefit. I think it was thirty-six and thirty-seven. But thirty-six actually has quite a few extensions in it that would be of interest to a lot of members of the public. Couple of things in there. To me, it sounded like it still kept vehicle emissions testing suspended through the middle of June. And it actually extends like driver's license renewals. If you've moved to Tennessee and you need to get a new license, certainly, certain other professional licenses, those extend, those expirations are all extended to the end of June. And so there is a list of many within that executive order. It's the longest executive order I've seen. So it has mainly to do with the extension of expiration dates for many licensures. So, and Ms. Haumacalli, anything on that you'd like to add? Or you went the other direction, you muted yourself.
All right. A lot of it was directed at healthcare facilities as well. And it was mainly just extensions of prior orders.
And that's all I have, Vice Mayor Camp.
Thank you, Mayor. Has anybody else wish to say a thing?
I just want to encourage the councilmen, the public, you know, do your best, try to support our local business as much as you can. There's a lot of them doing carryout, but what you can do to support our local business, I, I would appreciate that. And I'm sure they would also. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Alexander. Without objection, I would declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Bye. Bye. See you next week.
Y'all come back, now you're here.
Mr. Phan.
Yeah.
I have had wait-tempts before.